I would like to remind everyone, please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibration position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast from Compass Town 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Allen Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pray with me, Almighty God, we thank you for the privilege to assemble here today. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our leaders. And God, we pray for your grace and mercy this morning on behalf of Larry King's family and Mark Henderson's family, two of our employees who in just recent days have both lost their spouses. God, we just pray that you'll provide the mercy and grace as only you can. And God, let that be a reminder to us, there are more important things to life than what we put on the front burner most days. God, we just pray that you will be with his council, give them wisdom today, be with the mayor and his administration. God, when all is said and done, we promise to give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The emergency management director and their staff is not able to attend, so they sent some information and at this time I asked our city clerk to give us a notice of what was sent.
Okay, the reference is made to the week of February 21st through the 26th being proclaimed Severe Weather Awareness Week throughout the state. And there's a website link if you want to go there to get ready with supplies or whatever you need. It's www dot weather dot gov forward slash BMX forward slash outreach underline SWAW. And then the culmination of the week, there will be a sales tax holiday for severe weather preparedness items. Those will be tax exempt and there's a list attached of the types of items that you can get tax exempt. Batteries for both just regular batteries and cell phones, radio batteries, light sources, flashlights, that kind of thing, tarps, plastic sheeting, drop cloths, other things such as that, duct tape, plywood, food storage items, non-electric can opener, artificial ice, blue ice, ice packets, reusable ice, several other things in regard of fire extinguishers, smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, gas or diesel fuel tank or container. Taxable items are coin batteries and automobile and boat batteries, so everything is not exempt. There's also a single purchase price of $1,000 or less, any portable generator and power cords, anything that you would need in the event of storm and losing power. There's also a list of where you can get the COVID-19 vaccines. Anderson Pharmacy in Altoona, Rick's Discount Drugs in Atala, Walmart in Atala, Jerry's Discount Pharmacy, these are all in Gaston, Gaston City Pharmacy, Walmart, Hughes Pharmacy, and then to Rambo City, Super B Pharmacy, and Etowah Center for Internal Medicine, and in Southside, Southside Family Pharmacy.
All right, thank you. We will continue with the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held on February the 16th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February the 12th through the February the 18th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Mayor, do we have any proclamation?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none today. Our first item, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1901 Nakalula Road in District 7. And this is Dennis Wayne Bailey, Gary Hawkins, and Gala Baker being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves trash and debris. We opened it in September of last year, there've been no improvements. Pictures don't do it justice. I'm asking for a resolution today to clean this up. Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I want to thank you all and the people of North Alabama, thank you too.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I do have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution authorizing a two-year agreement with Academy Sports and Outdoors. I'd like to ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion before we take the vote?
Yeah, this is, again, this is not the first time we've engaged in an agreement with Academy Sports, but it is an agreement that allows the city to promote Academy Outdoors in exchange for various sponsorship activities on the part of Academy.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. I'd like to ask for immediate consideration. This is a request from the Engineering Department concerning a resolution authorizing the application and acceptance for a recreational trails program grant through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, AKA ADECA. Just a little further insight, the total project cost for the proposed improvements up at the trail system at Nakalula Falls is $483,900, or $391. Of that, the recreational trails program assistance will cover $386,712, or 80% of the total proposed project cost, and the city would be remaining with $96,679. And this was budgeted. The project includes installing eight-foot wide timber steps with landings to connect two existing trails and provide access to Black Creek, the installation of a timber bridge across Cascade Creek, and installing improved trail signage throughout the trail system. This is something that the Gaston Runners Club and Friends of the Falls and Heath Williamson and our Engineering Department and many others have been working on for a while, so I'd ask for immediate consideration, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any department reports, committee reports? Okay.
Hey, how are y'all today? I just wanted to give an update for Parks and Recreation of what we've been doing and what are some upcoming events happening in our department. We just finished our youth league basketball with 100 teams. This is the largest league for Parks and Rec. This weekend, we'll be hosting a 12 and under boys district tournament for the ARPA leagues. We also have two 8 and under boys teams, three 10 and under boys, two 8 and under girls, and two 12 and under girls that will be playing district this weekend in various locations. Our 8 and under girls have went straight to state, and that state competition will be held at the New Sand Mountain Park and Amphitheater in Abertville on March 12th through 14th. ARPA did decide in January to combine our 9 and 10 and under and 11 and 12 and under leagues just to make it 10 and under and 12 and under. That's why we have some larger teams going in those age groups this year. Baseball registration is closed and teams will be drafted Wednesday night. Practices start March 1st. Games will start around April 5th. We're working on schedules after the draft. Morana Park and Nakalua Falls Park and Mini Golf will reopen March 1st, so please visit our Facebook pages at Gaston Parks and Recreation or Nakalua Falls Park and Campground for hours of operation. Forest Cemetery and other city cemeteries have been open for graveside services, and that started last week. Other upcoming events that we have coming in April is the Couso Landing Super Bass Tournament on April 3rd at Couso Landing, Smoke on the Falls on April 10th up at the Nakalua Falls Park Campground, and Art on the Rocks, April 10th and 11th. We are still accepting vendor applications for Art on the Rocks through March 1st. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you for that update, please. Are there any other committee reports, board reports? Okay, at this time, we have a citizen request. We have Kirsten Bryant. You give us your name and your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Kirsten Bryant. Good morning, and thank you, Madam President, Mayor Guyton, and council members for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Kirsten Bryant, and I'm the Deputy Director of GASP, a nonprofit group based in Birmingham. Our address is 2320 Highland Avenue South, Suite 270, ZIP Code 35205. GASP's mission is to advance healthy air throughout the state, and one way we advance our mission is to advocate for the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADEM, to issue stronger air permits than it has historically. We work to ensure that permits are, one, protective of public health and the environment, and, two, consistent with the legal requirements ADEM is entrusted by us all to implement. We retained an attorney with more than three decades of Clean Air Act experience, and she took the lead in drafting comments on the proposed permits. She identified a myriad of issues that resulted in more than 50 pages of comments that we submitted to ADEM, which the county clerk gave you a copy this morning related to the rendering plant. Due to the length and complexity of these comments, we thought it would be helpful to provide you with some highlights of these concerns so that you appreciate the uncertainty of the air quality impacts of the proposed plant in Gaston. First, for those of you who have not had a chance to review the draft permit and the application, there is a sharp contrast between the testimony that we've been hearing and what's in the documents before ADEM. We've heard that the plant will have a thermal oxidizer to process and destroy odors and vapors. A thermal oxidizer is basically a high-temperature incinerator that decomposes hazardous air pollutants, volatile organic compounds, and odors from a rendering plant so they are not released into the atmosphere. Despite the requirement for the company to substantiate its claims about the ability of the proposed incinerator to destroy pollutants, they did not submit any supporting information to ADEM. So we have no way of knowing if the incinerator can do the job that it said it can. Also, the permit lacks requirements to ensure that the incinerator operates within a specified temperature range, so we will have no idea if it's actually destroying the pollutants as it was designed to do. We've also heard that the odor abatement system will be monitored and data will be reported to ADEM to ensure compliance. The proposed permit only has the company recording, quote, "problems which affect the odor-reducing capacity of the air pollution control equipment," end quote. Information on reductions in capacity is not helpful to know if the system is working. Further, there's no requirement to report this information to ADEM. They just need to keep it on site and share it with ADEM if asked. We've also heard that the building will be under negative air pressure so that when a door to the plant is open, the air pollutant emissions will not escape. The permit does not contain any requirements for monitoring and ensuring that negative air pressure system functions as it's described. We've also heard that trucks and trailers delivering to the plant will be covered and/or sealed and unloaded inside the plant, that the plant doors will be closed, that the trucks will be cleaned inside before leaving the plant. The permit does not have any such requirements regarding covered trucks, plant doors that will open and close, or requirements to clean the trucks. Notably, other states include these requirements in their permits. To the contrary, the permit application says the load-out bay is open at the truck entrance and exit, and there is no mention of load-out bay doors that will close when a truck is unloading or loading. The application says that the trucks leaving the plant with products are not enclosed and open to the air. We've also heard that water will be collected, cleaned, and treated before going to the local treatment plant. What you might not know is that sulfur dioxide, which is an air pollutant regulated by ADEM along with many other air pollutants, will be emitted from the wastewater treatment system and thus needed to be included in the air permit. The system is not covered by the air permit. Other states' air permits include emissions from and controls on the wastewater treatment operations. Testimony to the council makes it unclear exactly what equipment the company plans to install. And why is this an issue? Because the equipment a company plans to purchase and use needs to be identified and included in the air permit so that ADEM's engineers and the public can evaluate and assess emissions from the equipment and the ability of this equipment to work as planned. I am almost done. The council was offered examples of other plants that represented the type of plant planned for Gaston, and we had our attorney review air permits issued by the states of Iowa, Michigan, and South Carolina. She found that by and large, the permits issued by these permitting agencies are considerably more stringent in protecting air quality and more consistent with the legal requirements than what ADEM proposed. She also found that, as explained to the council earlier this month, that the European Union's 200-plus pages of regulations that apply to rendering operations throughout the EU's incredibly detailed and are prescriptive in comparison to the United States, which lacks regulations applying to rendering operations. So you should not look at the EU rendering plants as examples here in the US. Next, under state law and the federal Clean Air Act, information about emissions to the air from air pollutants must be made available to the public when a company applies for a permit to construct a new plant. This gives all of us the right to know what might be emitted and provide comments. Despite the legal requirement to provide this information, the company's permit application claimed air test data was, quote, "confidential." Despite its independent role, ADEM did nothing to ensure that the emission data was available to the public. Why does all this matter? Both the company and ADEM made calculations and determinations about the levels of emissions of air pollutants that would be emitted by the new plant. And without the numbers that were used in these detailed equations, you and the public have no way to verify whether the company's statements are accurate. Other chicken rendering plants routinely submit air emissions data to permitting agencies when a new plant is proposed and as part of the ongoing operations. The permit does not contain the provisions required to make sure that we all know the company is following the requirements, and if not, provide for enforcement. Consider the following analogy, and then I'm done. When we all drive our cars, we do so knowing that there's a speed limit on the road that we're driving on. And while some of us may take the risk and go a little bit faster than the posted limit, we all know that the police routinely use special devices to enforce that the speed limit is enforced. In other words, the speed limit is posted, we all have speedometers to track our speed, and the police may catch us speeding if we go over the posted limit. ADEM's proposed air permits, on the other hand, do not contain adequate monitoring methods, the speedometer, so that the public and ADEM know what the air pollutants the proposed permit will emit. The permits also do not contain provisions to ensure that the air pollutants stay below the levels the company says it agrees to, so the speedometer has no upper limit. And finally, without provisions in the permit that require the company to keep the amount of air pollutants it emits below a specified level, there is no way for ADEM or the public to enforce the permit. Essentially, nobody has a radar gun. Thank you for the opportunity to share these concerns with you today. I'll be happy to take any questions now or in the future. And to the extent that we don't have any time to address questions, I'll be happy to take your questions back with me, and we'll work to ensure to get you any answers that you might be seeking. Thank you for your time.
I just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Do your agency do this for all types of presentations to companies or plants that disseminate odor throughout the state of Alabama? Do you all go around and make these presentations concerning plants that disseminate odors in various cities throughout the state of Alabama?
Most of our work is concentrated in the Birmingham area, but we do do some work in Tuscaloosa. We've done some work in Mobile, in a town called Africatown, close to the coast. And we have, and we're here, one reason is because we do a lot of work with an organization called the Couso Riverkeeper. So sometimes, air issues and water issues overlap. So we do do work outside of Birmingham, but our limited capacity, we're a staff of three people, prevents us from addressing all permits throughout the state.
I just wanted to know, since there have been other odors disseminating in our area, but never heard of you all before. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have comments by the council. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. In case you don't know it, Senator Andrew Jones has never once contacted the City of Gaston or myself about these ridiculous bills he's trying to pass. He is a senator that has no knowledge of city's budgets, but is trying to decide what is best for everybody in each city in Etowah County. Mayor and council, the mayor and council in Gaston are elected to operate and manage the city's budget. Most elected officials in Montgomery, when they want to introduce a bill, they contact the governing body. He did not do that. He also had a meeting with the Mayor's Association, but he did not invite myself or Mayor Means from Atala. I don't know what his plan is there. Also, I did not, I'm sorry, when the mayor's asked, the mayor Means himself, he said he is not notified. And I'm just telling you that all the propaganda you see in the paper about his bill, I don't know what kind of job background he had. I think he had a coffee company at his house in his mother's basement, but that's about the second bill he's tried to introduce in Montgomery without contacting the governing bodies, and I don't like it. That's all I got to say.
Councilon Worthy?
Yes. First, I want to announce the job fair, March the 11th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the venue. Please wear a mask if you don't have one, we will provide one for you. Number two, I want to thank, I told him I was going to say this, Mr. Thrasher for coming Saturday. We got 18-wheel in, I think it was 1,200 or 1,300 and some boxes of food that we gave out. This man have a multi-million dollar construction jobs going on, and he came out Saturday, then sent his staff. He came out and brought the forklift the day before and set it there, and then that morning, he was there at 7:00 o'clock. The truck arrived at 8:00, and he unloaded every box on there himself. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing that. Number three, I was going to speak about this, I didn't know the mayor was going to say anything, but I read about Andrew Jones, Senator Jones's bill that he's trying to pass, and the occupational tax. When I was working for the city, well, still working for the city as an elected official, I didn't like paying occupational tax, but it's something that's needed for our city. And furthermore, with him trying to take the occupational tax, not just from the City of Gaston, but from all the cities surrounding Gaston that has occupational tax, the city's depending on that. And, you know, I even thought about before I ran to run against the occupational tax, and I thank God I didn't, because I didn't know, once I got in office, the money that was used for that occupational tax. So we need that. And then with them out there at the mega site, taking that, well, if we did get something out there in the street, the county cannot have occupational tax. How do you, he expect for them to be able to build the infrastructure to get a plant out there? You have to have money coming in, and that's just part of it. 2% is not that much. So I'm going to leave that alone. And like the mayor said, he should at least contacted us to talk about that before he did what he did, but he's a senator, he can do whatever he want to do. So I'm going to leave that alone. Now, let's talk about the rendering plant. I haven't said much about it publicly here, but listen, I don't have a problem with it coming, I have a problem with the location there at the airport. I think we all should join forces and work to move the rendering plant, because you can look at the tea leaves on the wall, they're going to build it here. So we might as well try to help the county move it out there at the mega site, because there's not as many houses around and it's far enough away, I think, from the city. And we could still, the Gaston water, we could still supply the water to them. But we're going to have to work together to try to get that done. So I'm asking the opposition to try to work together, I'm asking the city to do the same thing, to try to, because it really doesn't need to be there at the airport. I'm going to leave that alone. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. The man who led the meeting yesterday on Facebook, I'm not going to call his name because one of his colleagues told me about a month ago, don't give him any name recognition, so I'm not going to do that. One of his colleagues told me that they're saying, their self. I just think that's a shame when a town like Southside and their little council goes ahead and is all afforded away with this occupational tax, which they're probably going to lose, I'm just guessing. And I hadn't pulled the numbers, maybe $75,000 a year, maybe, in occupational tax, if that much. And the City of Gaston will probably lose $750,000 every year to us all the way down. Folks, you cannot take home $8 or $10 a week more and not expect to have to pay for something else. Somebody has to pay for the firemen, the policemen, public works, your garbage has to be picked up, trash has to be picked up. I mean, you know, we won't, a lot of us won't be here the next time when this goes. If it passes, that man said he was sure it was going to pass, well, everybody liked to have a little more money on their check. I wouldn't too on mine, but I'm not going to, I don't want to make $8 or $10 a week more and my garbage go up double. And you figure the math right there, if your garbage goes up double what you're paying now, you're actually losing money if that happens to you. And when stuff like that happens, we're going to have to start paying more insurance every year, and he's not thinking about how our insurance goes up here for our employees. There's a lot of costs here and a lot of factors. Just because one little town says that they want to, all of them's for that, don't mean everybody's for that. What about Atala? What about Gaston? Nobody's, you know, we don't know anything about all this, it surprised us yesterday. Why would you want to? Why would you want to try to hurt a town? Would you want it to be your legacy that you see that town go down? Well, that's what's going to happen, because, you know, the people in Gaston, when you do away with your occupational tax like he's wanting to do, our town's going to go down, where we going to get the money that we're all obligated to pay on some bond issues? Where we going to pay our farm, where we get the money to pay our employees? That is a good percentage of what we use for payroll, that money right there. And if it's taken away from us, I don't know what the city of Gaston do. What are you going to do, go up on your sales tax another percent? Somebody somewhere is going to go up, and you're not going to get these free services you're getting, and you're going to bring eight or ten dollars a week home, but that eight or ten dollars down the line somewhere is going to cost you about triple that. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. I know he said it's going to pass, like, you know, everybody's going to vote for it. Well, I mean, everybody's not going to vote for it, because I think a lot of people in this town sees where it's going, how it's going to hurt your city. If you care about your city and you want to see your city thrive, make sure that you talk to that man. And it's kind of ironic to me that the election's in two years for the legislators, and that's about the time that we're going to vote on all this stuff. Would that be a good issue to run, you think, for somebody that's wanting to run for office? That's all I got to say.
Councilman Reed?
I think, the stomach blow is that's twenty-three percent of a forty-eight million-dollar budget. That's enough to run the fire department and the police department. And here's one, don't want to lose either one of them. So it's just something to look at. I agree with Councilman Worthy and the mayor. My problem is with our esteemed senator, I can't figure out where he's going. I really can't, and I don't believe he knows, because he got to me an end somewhere to it. So I'm looking forward to a debate on that, if he would come up here, talk to us at City Hall, by the mayor, actually, and let's find out what his plan is. All I can see in his plan is straight down. Somewhere, you got to go up. Anyway, thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Real quick, before I start talking politics, I'm the chairman of the Boy Scouts of America campaign this year, so everybody, please, take a moment to go to onbsa.org. That is the Boy Scouts of Alabama's local chapter. You can select Etowah Division from the dropdown and make a donation, and it goes straight to the Boy Scouts groups in this county. So please, y'all consider giving to the Boy Scouts, they support a whole host of different things. For those of y'all who have never heard the story or read the book, The Last Lecture, I always enjoyed that. It was about a guy that was the computer science director at Carnegie Mellon University, and he was diagnosed with terminal leukemia, and it became a really popular book. It's a short read, if you've never read it, but it's fascinating. He speaks a lot about his life and experience as being head of one of the very first computer science labs in the United States. And the one thing he always said, or that he said in the book that always stuck with me, and he says, "Being an Eagle Scout is the one thing that is still relevant on your resume forty years after you accomplish it." And it always meant a guaranteed callback interview for anybody who applied to the Carnegie Mellon program that was an Eagle Scout. So for those of y'all who aren't familiar with the Boy Scouts, or maybe have questions about the larger national program, these are local kids. This is money that will go straight to local Gaston kids, a hundred percent of it. So please consider supporting the Boy Scouts. Last year was a terrible year for fundraising, for obvious reasons, so they are, the local chapters are really struggling. So, okay. Here's my two cents on Senator Jones and the occupational tax and the general process. As far as the occupational tax goes, all I'll tell you is, I'm not an economist enough to where I can speak a hundred percent authoritatively about this, but the only thing I'll tell you is, every single time I've looked at comparable communities that do not have occupational tax, their value-added taxes are higher, their gas taxes are higher, their grocery taxes are higher in some situations. It has been my experience, and I say this as an elected official, the government is going to get their money from you one way or another. They are going to find a way to get it. You know, one example online, I talked with somebody about the occupational tax a few months ago, and they lived in Tucson, Arizona. If you buy a brand-new car in Etowah County right now in Gaston, you pay three-point-two-five percent luxury tax, basically, sales tax, when you purchase the vehicle. In Tucson, Arizona, it's eight-point-seven-five percent. So that's important when you think about, okay, let's say you're making fifty thousand dollars a year, and the occupational tax is coming out of your paycheck. That's a thousand bucks a year that's coming out of your paycheck in an occupational tax. All it takes is you to buy one vehicle in that community that has an eight-point-seven-five percent value-added tax for, sales tax for purchases versus here, and you've wiped out that thousand-dollar savings in one transaction. So that's what I mean when I say, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know what the long-term answer is, but I know that it's something worth discussing. But I'll just say, look, it's not fair unless you're comparing apples to apples. Look at every tax in that city compared to every tax in this city. And the same thing's true, a lot of people believe that Gaston's the only city with an occupational tax. There are five, six, seven other municipalities just in this county that have occupational tax. So, I mean, just keep that in mind. I don't know what the answer is, I'm not advocating for one or the other, I just say that it's not as simple as it might seem when it gets presented in a, you know, short format. As far as Senator Jones in general, I agree with the mayor, I agree with the rest of this council, that he has sidestepped the general common courtesy of reaching out to us. I have never gotten a call from Senator Jones, and I've called him many a times, and we've talked about things very casually, I know him, I would say, on a casual level. He's never called me once in anticipation of any of this legislation to just go, "Hey, Jason, heads up, just a common courtesy, we got this one coming down the pipeline. You know, I know you may disagree with it, but here's the reason I'm doing it." Never once. And that's a genuine criticism for me of him. I don't appreciate it. You know, this goes all the way back for me to the sports complex. You know, he introduced, for those of y'all that don't remember, he introduced a piece of legislation just after he was elected that would increase the lodging tax. Well, everybody knows most of the hotels in Etowah County are in the city of Gaston. It would increase the lodging tax, but it would also divert those funds away from the city of Gaston to the county commission, I believe, to promote the mega sports complex. So that was him kind of taking revenue away from the city while he was raising the taxes, taking the revenue away from the city and giving it to another entity. And then he did it again just recently at the beginning of this session. He introduced a piece of legislation that would change the way beer is taxed in Etowah County. I don't know if y'all know that, but what it would do is change the portion, every time you buy beer, there's a portion that goes to the state, a portion that goes to county, a portion that goes to the local city that you bought the beer in. What he proposed was to change the way that was divvied up, so that more of that money would go to the county commission. Not only would more of the money go to the county commission in the bill that he introduced, it would be three years retroactive, which means now cities all over this county would have to cut a check theoretically to the county commission to pay for any beer taxes that they had collected over the last three years. I know y'all aren't really into legislative formatting, but that is really unprecedented to do that, to say, not only do we want to change the law moving forward, but you got to go back and give us some money from the past. And so now, here we are again, in a scenario where it appears that he's doing something to take a massive amount away from the city and open up an opportunity for the county to generate more tax revenue. I don't know why that's here, but the only criticism I'll make is, pick up the phone and call somebody. Because when you don't call somebody and you're not willing to talk to each other, everybody fills in the blanks about why you're doing something and why you're being the way you're being, and that's all that's happening here, is this can be incredibly confusing. It could be a lot easier if we had an open conversation about it. But anyway, that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Baugh?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'll try not to reiterate what's already been said, but I'm in agreement with what I've heard so far. The occupational tax conversation is, you know, that bears a conversation. I don't mind having that conversation, but one thing that jumped off the page at me when I was reading it is that he's using seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, which is the smallest denominator, and that's smart to do when you're trying to sell something if you're on his side. I'm going to use the other denominator, which is about fifteen million dollars a year. That's what it'll culminate to, that's what we're currently receiving, is about fifteen million dollars a year in the city of Gaston. So that's, that's number one. And number two, what we're doing, his proposal to me, is swapping one dollar for a nickel, that's five cents. And let me explain that. He wants to take away the occupational tax. So let's just put it down to the lowest, that's one-dollar bill. So he said we can make up for that loss of revenue by increasing our sales tax, because citizens will have more discretionary income. The sales tax rate is ten percent for every time you spend something. The city of Gaston gets five percent of that ten percent. The other five percent goes to the federal and the state government. So we're going to get a nickel for every dollar we lose. I haven't done that math yet, but we've got to figure out how much we'll have to raise, how much our sales tax revenue will have to increase in order to equal fifteen million dollars that will be taken away from the city. Haven't done that yet, but I can tell you, that's going to have a lot of zeros. It's going to be a huge number. It's almost, I would say, it's probably impossible to increase our, our sales tax revenue by that amount. So it's just, I don't think it's well thought out. It always kind of plays well to certain crowds, but when you get to the math of it, when you're looking at the actual impact, it just doesn't make very good, sound, financial sense. He mentioned tightening our belts. I don't know if we can, we have a fifty, I think this year, fifty-one million-dollar budget, so we'd have to tighten our belts fifteen million dollars. And I'm sure we could tighten our belts somewhat, but I don't think we can find fifteen million dollars to tighten, and I don't think the sales tax increase is going to make up the other remaining of the fifteen million dollars. So it's just a real dangerous proposition. And I know it's going to be feathered in over a twenty-year period, but that's, it's just, it bears some pretty serious thought and, and open discussion, to be transparent. I think we should have those discussions. I am not against that. Maybe, maybe I'll learn something, and maybe what I'm saying's not correct, but I would, before we just put it on a ballot and vote on it, I think all, everything needs to be out on top of the table, and we need to really look real hard at that. It's kind of hard to undo that once you, once you start doing it, and I agree with Councilman Wilson, you're going to, the government's going to get what they need to get. The city of Gaston cannot operate, we can't go from fifty million dollars to thirty-five million dollars. It's just not going to be, it won't work. So we have to figure out how we're going to do this, and so we would have to raise taxes in other areas. We get tax revenue from three sources, sales tax, property tax, and occupational tax. So if we're going to do away with that occupational, then we have to, I mean, it's just real simple, taxes would have to be raised elsewhere, so, and maybe that's the best way to do it. I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying, but let's do the math and let's walk through this before we have a referendum and spend all the money to have a big vote on something that we might not know exactly what we're, what we're voting on. I mean, as I sit here, I don't know if I know exactly what I'd be voting on. I think I need to get people smarter than me to do the math and lay it out, and do some pro formas and some projections before we even have a, have a discussion, and it would be nice to have a discussion concerning that. I think all of us would welcome that. So that's about all that I would like to say. Ms. Baker, I meant to thank you first for coming here from Birmingham. Thank you for your information. This is a lot of, a lot of data, so this is, I'll be reading that, and I appreciate your effort to help us to, so we can make the best decisions for our city. Thank you so much. Thanks, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll, I'll just begin by saying I respect those who are in opposition of the rendering plant. Respect their position. I don't respect necessarily all of the behavior that we're seeing on either side of this discussion, to be quite honest, but, but you got to respect people for, for standing up for, for what they believe in, in the position that they want to take. So I'll leave that where it is. I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with, with any of that. I do have a problem, however, with, with a state senator who's being puppeted. If you know him, you know he's not smart enough to present any of this information on his own. And so it's, it's obvious that he's being puppeted. And, and, and let me be very honest about something. And, and again, I think my historic relationships, my, whether they be personal or professional, the way I've represented my district and, and the way I've tried to be an ambassador for this city, speaks to the fact that everything's not about race with me. But let's just be honest, he views this city council as a minority body, and so he doesn't feel that it warrants a conversation with us anytime he makes a decision. He doesn't feel like he has to talk to us, because we're a minority body to him. He's a Cherokee County representative, or resident, so he could really care less about what's going on in Gaston. And I have to be honest about that entire delegation. That entire delegation as a whole has been worthless to us since about 2010. When we lost Larry Means, when we lost Jack Page and, and others, we lost representation. Now, I will extract Phil Williams from that equation, because I've been able to communicate with him over the years. And I'm not, and I don't have an affinity for him just because we share a last name. I just, I've been able to communicate with him, and we have not always agreed. We've not always agreed, but at least I could talk to him. At least he was respected amongst his peers. What we have now, trust me, I've had those conversations with their peers. I have to go, if I'm going to get something done, I have to talk to representatives from other counties in order to move issues in Etowah County that are important to Etowah County. I challenge anybody in this audience, think for a moment about anything meaningful that we've gotten out of our state legislative delegation since 2010. Think, think very hard. Take your time. I won't rush you. Take your time. We've got nothing. We've got nothing. And, and I hate to say that. I, I sit on my hands and bite my lip because I don't believe in being like this in public. I think we have so much more, I mean, I, I don't agree with Councilman Worthy on a lot, but I definitely agree with what he just said earlier. I would like to see us come together and maybe, I mean, I don't know if the, the, the math will work, I don't know if the, if the financial aspects will work, but I'd like to see us collaborate and come up with an alternative location, because that is an opportunity for this city, or for this county. I'd love to see that as opposed to us being divided, us being drawn apart. But, but, but having said that, I, I respect the opposition movement and a lot of what's going on there, but, but, but all you got, all you have to do is know him. He's just not bright enough to have come up with this on his own. And so it's, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that you feel helpless when you're a minority elected official and you have zero representation there. You, you can't depend on him to represent your interest in any way. He doesn't care. And so, Jason, unlike you, I have yet to try to call, because I know it will be futile. So, so I don't even try. And shame on me for being that way. But doesn't mean I haven't been effective, because we've just learned to engage in workarounds. We have a lot, we pay a lobbyist who's in Montgomery on our behalf. So much of what we get, whether it's grants, whether it's favorable legislation, whether it's anything that we're after, we get that through our lobbyists, not the people that we pay to be down there working for us. And it's sad to have to say that. It's really sad to have to say that. But, and so, and again, when you look at this body, and I, and I've said this in the past, when you look at this body and you, and if you hear us without fail, there've been seven people who have pretty much said the exact same thing, you got to look at that and say, there must be something to that. You know, these guys aren't just, you know, we didn't decide before this meeting that we were going to just, you know, we didn't decide before this meeting that we were gonna all chime in and say something bad about our, our senator. No. No, th- this has just kind of been brewing. We haven't been getting any representation, and this is just more of the same. There's a Senate Bill one oh seven, the PTSD bill, that's floating around in Montgomery right now. So, so he's talking about taking our occupational tax, and on top of that, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong about this, but it's my understanding that he's in, he's in support, support of PTSD, of the PTSD bill, which will, is, it was, which will essentially, without a cap, require that cities include for PTSD diagnoses under their workers' compensation program for firemen. Do you realize that has the potential to break us? So if you're complaining about city services now, imagine what something like that'll do for you. And I don't know what genius came up with that one. Again, I just ask to be respected, that's all. Just ask to be respected. I've never once spent this much time making any negative comments about our delegation. Never once. But it, I've had it up to here, and this has absolutely nothing to do with the opposition to the rendering plant. Folks, keep, keep doing what you're doing. This has everything to do with a senator who has made a very deliberate decision to disregard what's good for Gaston, in large part because it is viewed as a minority body. He's made a very deliberate decision to, to disregard what's good for us and pursue what's good for himself. And that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Uh, when I was at Jacksonville State, I read a book entitled, "The Mind of the South." So if you read that book, then you'll understand why a lot of things are happening in the South, that it happens in the South. This is nothing new, but it's called "The Mind of the South." Uh, I, I call for a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Oh, and, uh, everybody, I'm sorry, he asked first.
That's okay.
Ms. Bryant, I want to apologize. I called you Ms. Baker, but you're Ms. Bryant. So I, I, I just wanted to let you know that I saw that. I, I sure apologize. Thank you, Ms. Bryant, for coming to Gaston today.
If it, if she had a mass, she would, most people who have, have name problems, she would've jumped up and said something. That's not my name.
Why are we talking about stuff we read, read in the paper? I want to, um, also bring this to light. It was something said in the paper, uh, I guess it would be for the side of the rendering plant. It said that the, uh, the, uh, we may not get into other businesses because we turned this one down, and that, and that's not true. Because when I was doing my research, I called the, uh, Commerce Department, and I talked with the point man, uh, for this rendering plant that actually, uh, sent it, you know, sent out the bid to all the different cities. And he's, he told them I could quote him, but I'm not gonna quote him, because I don't have it in writing, and I've learned, you don't quote people unless it's in writing, because, uh, the National Guard was against this rendering plant, and had a lawyer that was about to go in and speak at the A M. meeting, but the, uh, political stuff got to him, and he was called and told to stand down before he walked in for his presentation. So I'm not gonna, uh, say anything else about that, but that is not true. He said, uh, several other cities had turned it down, but he could not say whether they turned it down because of the smell, they thought it was gonna smell, or it could've been that they didn't have the, uh, they didn't meet the criteria by being close to interstate and all this kind of stuff. But he said that is no way, shape, or form would affect us getting in any other industry, because he said cities turn down stuff all the time. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I call for a motion to adjourn.